Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education Special Meeting for, or Regular Meeting, Special Meeting for October 14th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item B, no additions or deletions this evening. Item C, General Consent Agenda. Have a motion to approve the General Consent Agenda, please.
I'll move.
Moved by Ms. Demingsek. Support by Ms. Quino. Anything on the General Consent Agenda, the board would like to move for the discussion. There are none, no recall vote, Ms. Piden, please.
Ms. Demingsek? Ms. Aquino? Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mr. Soba?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtovich?
Yes.
Eyes all, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Item D, Board of Education Vacancy Candidate Interviews. Okay, so. Statement that I wanted to read into the record on tonight's proceedings and how we go about our selection. Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education Seat Vacancy Interview Process. The purpose of tonight's special board meeting is to interview six candidates for the vacant Board of Education seat, open as a result of the resignation of trustee Dr. Joey Andriosco. As was discussed at the October 12th, 2021 Special Board Meeting, the Board vacancy was posted and the district received applications from 23 individuals. The Board sent questions to the 23 applicants and reviewed all material from the individuals to determine six candidates to interview this evening. The six candidates who will be interviewed tonight were selected by the Board at its October 12th, 2021 Special Meeting. As was also previously discussed, the Board is utilizing the Michigan Association of School Boards' Board Vacancy Toolkit to assist with the selection process. The attributes from the toolkit the Board is using determine the most qualified candidate are as follows. Number one, the candidate puts children first. Number two, the candidate does not have a single item or political agenda. Number three, candidate exhibits leadership qualities. Number four, the candidate appreciates diversity. Number five, the candidate understands budget and finances. Number six, the candidate demonstrates knowledge of educational issues and policies. Number seven, candidate demonstrates integrity. Number eight, candidate demonstrates an understanding of community outreach. And number nine, the candidate understands the role of a potential board member and accepts and expects accountability. The six board candidates the Board will interview tonight are the following individuals. Number one, Christopher Girl. Number two, Gene Kazmercheck. Number three, Kristen Murray. Number four, Kenneth Pearl. Number five, Jason Ryan. And number six, Bruce Wade. The Board will ask each candidate six total questions. The questions will be the same for each candidate and there will be a 20-minute time limit for each interview. Once the interviews are complete, each board member will be asked to rank their top candidate. Pursuant to state law, a new board member must be named by October 22nd, 2021. Are there any questions from board members related to tonight's process? So just to reiterate, everybody will, after following the six interviews, we will all select our top candidate for the record. Okay, um, the first candidate can now be called into the auditorium to be interviewed. Yeah. Yes. Hi, Mr. Girl, please, please have a seat. This is our first candidate, Christopher Girl.
Oh, no, this is Mr. Wade.
Bruce Wade, okay, I went off this order, my mistake. I'm sorry, Mr. Bruce Wade. Welcome to our board meeting, we thank you for taking the time this evening to spend with us. Yeah, you want to make sure that's on. And we appreciate you coming out tonight to answer these questions so we can select our board member. But we're going to each ask a question, so we're going to start with Ms. Piden to my right here, and she'll ask the first question, and I'll kind of watch the time if we get to a point where we need to speed it up a little bit, I may interrupt to say, okay, we got two more questions, there's only five minutes left or something along those lines.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening. What are your challenges facing, what are the challenges facing our school district?
I believe there are several major challenges right now in the school systems, not only here but across the country. The most pending right now would be the issues with the COVID vaccine and being able to have the students acclimate into the schools properly, safely, and obviously trying to keep everybody from getting sick. That would, that would probably be the top concern right now. Other concerns are, there are a lot of issues with the social environment and trying to get people to acclimate to be inclusive and different diversity training programs that are taking place. And one thing that hasn't been talked about lately is school safety. We still have to have safety in our schools and follow protocols that have kind of taken a backseat lately, but being in law enforcement, I see that on a daily basis. And I want to make sure that that's always addressed right at the top of.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Can I be heard?
Yes, I can hear.
At times you may be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference. Hello? It's not I. Says it's us.
Can you hear me now? Sorry, everybody. At times you may be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or law that you're required to uphold as a trustee. How will you handle this?
Well, I'm being the, I'm the police chief in Clinton Township, and I face many of those similar situations on a daily basis. There's always a guiding principle that I try to follow that I learned very early in my career is what's right is not always popular, and what's popular is not always right. If you follow that and you do what you feel is the right thing to do, obviously, there are certain situations where you have to get a legal ruling and obviously, legal rulings, state mandate, federal mandates always have to be followed. But if it's a moral issue, if you do what you feel is right in your heart, I don't think you'll ever have a problem.
Thank you. Very nice.
Okay. Again, thank you for coming and thank you for your service as a police officer.
Thank you.
Number three, what do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
Um, there are multiple skills and I think they change as, as time goes forward. Right now, I believe we have to have children that leave the school district that have good principles, are be able to acclimate into society in a very successful way, but we have to make them marketable for whatever their desires are for employment. Not everybody has college material, not everybody wants to go to college. We have to make sure that we have programs that address those issues. We need people who are good with their hands, mechanics, electricians, plumbers. So I think one of the main things that we have to do in the schools is identify what every person's potential and talent is and try to provide them with the tools and a roadmap to follow that so they can be successful. But I think those are the main challenges. We have to make sure we stay ahead of the curve as far as what the market's going to be five, 10 years from now. The jobs of today might not be the jobs of 10 years from now. Right now, the country is 60,000 people short of truck drivers. But they said 10 years from now, truck drivers might be obsolete because of the way remote cars are being developed. So I think it's important that we follow what the market's going to be five, 10 years from now and provide students with those skills when they leave the schools.
Thank you very much.
How do you see that the role of a, of a board member differs from the role of a superintendent administration?
Well, the superintendent, I would kind of correlate that to the CEO of an organization. And if I could draw a parallel, the role of superintendent is, is very similar to what I do as the chief of police because I oversee all aspects of my organization, just like the superintendent is in charge of all aspects of the school organization, budgeting, buildings. He, he doesn't do it directly, but he oversees all those things and ultimately is responsible. The Board is a seven-person governing body which is in charge of, I would compare it to like a city council. And they come up with more group decisions where the superintendent is the lone overseer of that organization. So if we had a problem in the schools, you would go to that person for the answers because they're ultimately responsible. Just like in my role, if there's a problem in the police department, although I didn't put my hands on something, I'm ultimately responsible. That's pretty much the superintendent's role. And the superintendent is the face of the school district. He, he represents everything that the school district is about and he is comparable to, say, Mark Hackle of the county. But this board here, I, I would compare more to like a city council where they come up with more of a group conclusion and, and determination ruling.
After review and discussion on significant issues, the Board operates by a majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your opinion, how would you manage the situation?
Well, if, if my opinion was different, we could hash that out behind closed doors and discuss something, but when you leave, ultimately, the decision has to be united one. And if you go out and you don't support what your fellow board members have supported, then you're really no good to the organization. It was, it's the same in the military. People can have different conflicting views, but you have to have a consensus when you walk out the door because unity is everything, teamwork is everything. And if you walk out and you're not all on the same page, you become fragmented and it doesn't do anybody any good. You have your opportunity behind closed doors or in a meeting like this to discuss your differences, but once that decision is made, everybody has to become one on that decision.
Thank you. If you were appointed to the Board, would you seek reelection when your appointment ends?
I believe I would. I actually planned on running down the road here. The, the problem I've always had is being in the administration with the police department, I'm required to attend the township board meetings as a representative of the police department, and those board meetings are every other Monday night, which is in conflict with what this is. And I say that because I've been a big supporter of the Chippewa Valley Schools for a long time. I enjoy everything about it. And I think I've done a lot of things in the schools that I, I think have been very favorable. And people that know me that are in the school district know what a big supporter I am at the schools. There's a couple of programs that I initiated at the police department, which was very well received by the school district. And the biggest one I can, I can bring up is the school walkthroughs where the officers who are in their areas, once or twice a week, stop at that school in their area and get out and do a walkthrough through the school. And the, the administration at the school loved it. They, they were very open to having that. The, the children get to see the officers and create a positive contact. But the other thing it does is, you have to remember, if we get sent to a school for an emergency, you know, the, the school district has, I believe, 24 schools. There's nobody that could possibly remember all the floor plans and entrance points of those schools. So the officers going to that school, it's a benefit to us because it familiarizes us with the settings there. And that was very well received by all the, all the schools in the district. In fact, obviously, north of Hall Road, it becomes the sheriff department. They don't do that. And a couple of times they said, hey, could you call Sheriff Whitsham and see if they would start doing that? But, uh, you know, I kind of threw it out there to them, but I don't believe they started doing it.
Okay. Six questions, is there anything in conclusion you, or for the Board? Thanks, Ms. Quino. Would the Board like to ask any questions? Shall we?
I have one or two questions. Just quick ones. You have children in the district, I believe, right?
That's correct.
Okay. When was the last time you attended a board meeting?
Well, I, I really can't go because they're on Monday nights and it's the same night as the township board meetings, which I have to go to. So I have one-to-ones in the past. I will tell you one that I went to and Mr. Bednar, I remember was there, was we had an incident in 2004 where there was a very serious threat made to the school district. And I believe it was yourself that asked me to come to the school board meeting and kind of explain what happened that day, which I don't know if you remember that.
Yeah. I'm not sure if, maybe the Board.
Yeah.
questioned your presence, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, but the problem I've always had is, I, I'm not available on Monday nights. I'm retiring at the end of this month, so this, I don't want to say perfect timing, but it was perfect timing for me to apply for this position. And I just want to reiterate, I've had great, great positive relationships with, throughout the school district. And I, I know a lot of people were excited that I did put in for this position because they know I have the heart for it. And, you know, not only that, my son goes here, but all, all through the way outside of him, I, long before we had him, I was doing a lot of things within the schools, so.
Hey, the fellows. Anything in the closing, Mr. Wade, do you want to say to the Board?
I would just like to say that you outlined the criteria when you started this meeting tonight of what the candidate should have. I do consider myself a big leader in the township. I, I know that many of the political officials look to me for advice in, in a lot of different situations. I do have, I'm in charge of our budget, it's only $22 million. I know the school districts is 200 million, so, but I do know the concept. As far as policies, I know there's a lot of policy that goes this way. I just signed into policy in our police department this month, our implicit bias policy, which in today's, today in time is very important. And I've made sure all of our officers are trained in that. So I am up to date with policies. I'm in charge of all the policies, obviously, as the police chief. So many of the criteria that Mr. Bernard indicated when you started the meeting, I, I'm very familiar with. So I, I've done that in my career.
Okay, well, again, yeah, you're a very good candidate. You know all those qualifications that we did speak of and, uh, great service to our community, regardless of what happened here today. I know the Board's appreciative of all the years you've been in law enforcement and we wish you the best in your retirement, so congratulations.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for letting me be part of the group of six. I, I, it's an honor, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll have to look. I don't know if I, it could be stuck. Could be stuck. I can see this. Same thing.
Yeah, I thought it was different too. Different. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I handed mine in too. I did have this one. That was the one I had before last weekend.
Yeah, I thought it was just me, I thought they were different also. Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same one, number five. Five.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Let's look at number, remember 19 on this one. That's the one that was taken from. Ask the same, we're supposed to say the same questions for everybody, so.
It's kind of too late now.
Questions you can't ask people.
Thing was, we can do the follow-up, but I say the follow-ups should be on your question, regarding a question you asked because we're supposed to be asking, in fairness, all the same questions, right? So you can't.
You can't ask somebody familiar. So we.
So Denise, she'll ask the first question now.
Yeah. So.
It's Mr. Pearl, I believe.
Does that mean you need, you need Robert to ask that question to everybody?
You can't ask about whether they have kids.
About board meetings, but.
Say it again.
You can ask a question about board meetings, the, the children question was already previously asked, so we don't need to put that in the record.
See, I guess I didn't ask, I just kind of confirmed. No, I did, I said, you don't have, or you do have kids. I didn't ask them if they have kids.
I'd say it. Mr. Kenneth Pearl, good evening, we welcome you to our board meeting. Thank you for taking the time to participate in the selection here. As you know, we have.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, it's on. We have 20 minutes, so, six questions, 20 minutes. If we're running behind, I might interrupt and say, hey, we're, we can speed it up a little bit, so we know. I think we're gonna, we're gonna be fine in that 20 minutes, but.
Okay.
That's it, so, okay. With that, your first question, Ms. Quino.
Well, you know, obviously, staff shortages are one of them. And we have to deal with that as a community. It's, it's unfortunate. I remember when my daughter-in-law was teaching, there were 50 people for every position. And now, it's not the same. We're, we're needing a lot of teachers, a lot of staff, bus drivers, everything. So we have to work on that. In the short term, I guess one of the other issues we have is the division, the political division that's come up because of COVID and the masking and vaccination problems are, are a heated problem. Eventually, obviously, they'll go away once everybody is, once the, you know, the vaccinations creep up and we get to the point where it's not a problem. But it's been very difficult. In the long term, I think that because of COVID, I think the Board's got to do more community outreach. I think we have to explain to the public, to the citizens, to the residents, to the parents, how good the school system is and why their kids should, should come here and continue to. We have a lot of building going on in Clinton Township and Compton Township continually. You'd be surprised how many homes are being built in, in all areas of this community. And you want to make sure that the community knows that public education is important and available for everyone. So I, I think it's very important that we get out in the community more and we, and I'm sure the Board's had a hard time with COVID getting out in the community. But I think that we could be making a turn. And then I, you know, I know I've been vaccinated three times, so I'm okay.
Thank you. Pearl, at times you may be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or law that you're required to uphold as trustee. How will you handle this?
Well, my past experiences on many boards, which I've served on over the years, either chaired the boards or served as a trustee on many boards, and I've always tried to listen to all the board members' views. I've tried to get input from the administration and from citizens that come to speak before the Board. And it, you know, if I, if it comes to the end that the Board makes a decision by majority vote on an item, and maybe I'm not in favor totally of it, I still will back the Board and the administration's decision and implement that. I would never go against the majority wishes of the Board. I may personally feel different, it doesn't happen that often because they try to work consensus together and work out these things and talk it over. And I think in the past, I've shown through many boards with, you know, when I was president of this board and when I was trustee in Clinton Township and other communities that always try to work with the Board and the administration and come to a consensus that everybody can agree. And when you're done with a meeting, you, you want to basically not take it personally. You know, the vote's the vote and you want to continue and put it behind you and just go on. It's not a good idea to, to hold a grudge or anything. It just basically, you're doing the people's business. You're trying on this Board to make sure the kids get a good education, do the right thing for the kids. And you don't want to get personally involved in issues and, and be upset. So you, you give your opinion, everybody gives their opinion, and you put all the facts, do your research, and, and you work out a compromise. That answer?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
Well, you know, I know what it's interesting with with my eldest, it was a good writing skill. We were lucky that the teacher that that he had spent a lot of time going over composition and such, and and because in college you weren't, they weren't taking tests, they were writing everything, you know, reports. So it's important that that the child get an overall good education, that they're involved. All our kids were involved in sports, and I think a child's got to grow up knowing that you got to work with everybody, you got to do your best. All our kids graduated from college. My daughter was pretty much in the top of her class. We try to instill hard work in all the kids, and I hope that the parents do the same thing, but Chippewa Valley offers an excellent education. My daughter got a region scholarship to U of M from here, and you know, my son went to a private college at Albion. But basically, I think it's important that the student get a well-rounded education, they try the best they can, and the parents work with them, and I think that answers that.
Thank you.
We have different questions, or?
No.
Did we miss something?
Oh. No, they started different.
Oh, that's okay. How does the role of the board member differ from the role of the superintendent and administration?
Well, it's always been my feelings that the board as a whole hires the superintendent, and the superintendent you work, we used to meet at the beginning of the year or other times and work out policies and goals that that the superintendent should take care of. The board member's job is is, you know, community outreach, is working on raising the level in the schools, but through the superintendent, you want to set those priorities and goals and let him implement it. The board is an individual, not the board. When you're meeting here as a board, then you have one vote. In a community, you want to have some respect for the staff and and the schools and superintendent, let them do their jobs, but you hold the superintendent accountable to those, meeting those goals, and evaluate his job based on what the board has set as parameters and goals for the year. That answer that?
So I kind of feel like you already answered this one, but after review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by a majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage the situation?
I think I kind of answered that before. Basically, I believe that the vote, majority vote goes, and I never have a bad, hard feeling about it. I always feel that it's entirely majority vote. You give your opinion, and you listen to everybody, and you listen to the community and the administration, and when you're done, you know, whatever the vote is, the vote is, and personally, and I don't take it personal, and I go, you know, go to the next issue. You know, I feel that the board has a right to, as a majority, to make those decisions, and I live with it. I don't have a problem.
If appointed to the board, would you seek reelection when the appointment expires?
At this point, I'd keep that option open. I'm I've run a few times in my life, so I know what's involved. I guess I'd like to see gauge the community support in the short time that I'd be filling this term if I'm appointed, but I'm I would be interested. I'm not ruling it out, and I might be interested in running for that seat, but I'd have to see how, what community support there is for me to do it. It takes a lot to run for office, and make sure, but I want to make sure that they think I'm doing a good job, people in the community.
Thank you.
Is there any follow-up clarification?
Why? Have to ask this. When was the last time you attended a school board meeting, Chippewa School Board Meeting?
I I haven't attended, I've watched it online since I got online, but I I'm a member of the foundation for the last twenty years, so I'm involved in in raising money for the students here at Chippewa. I've been a member of the Coalition, which we did major work involved in campaigns to help students, so I'm involved in that. I don't like to get involved in your policy, what you're making, you know, at a board meeting, but I'm involved in the community. I serve on, I put it on my resume, the McLaren Board, Foundation Board, we raise money for for the hospitals. I'm on the Goodfellas. We just had a big Goodfellas dinner last night. We raised money for kids in the community that needed it at Christmas time. I've been on the Optimists for years, we raise money for kids, so I'm involved a lot in the community. I've also been involved in a lot of things. When I got with Clinton Township over twelve years ago on their board, I wanted to make sure that the kids in Chippewa got to use this, the our parks and rec programs with the Latchkey programs, that we made sure that there was a cooperation in the summer for the kids so they could use. We've increased recently. I took on putting in a multi splash pad for the kids in the community. It's the first ever. I've worked on that for two years for the kids, and I just work on, you know, try to do a lot of things to make it better for the kids in the community. We're we're now working on a inclusive playground next to it. We're raising money for that. It'll probably take a few years. Costs a lot to put that in, but I've been involved in budgets for years. I've been involved in the construction of a lot of schools here for years. I have a school, I have a construction background and a finance background, so I'm very much hands-on in a lot of things I'm involved in and serving a lot of boards, but I don't attend your board meetings. Up to now.
Okay, is there anything in conclusion or in closing you'd like to say to the board?
No, I just, I'm offering my experience here in other communities. I think that I would be a candidate that could get going right away and start without any schooling. I've been certified as a board member years ago. I keep up on everything. I know your finances. I've looked online. I know where you're at. I've talked to your people over the time about different things going on in the community, so I've kept in touch, and I think that I would seamlessly be able to fit into the board's desires. Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pearl, for coming this evening and sharing your thoughts with us. So have a good evening. Thank you. I think we can go right to the six fifty. Are we ready? Wish. Welcome to our board meeting. Thanks for taking the time to speak with us this evening. Have a seat, and we're gonna have six questions, twenty minutes total time. It's going real well. We're ahead of schedule. First two interviews, so take your time when answering, and if we do run late, I may interrupt and just, you know, speed things up a little bit, so.
Oh, it's on. Sounds like it's on. Okay.
All right, we will begin our questions here. Seating eyes is the first one, and each board member will ask one. First question, Mr. Ryan, what are the challenges facing our school district?
From what I can tell, just watching the, listening to the board meetings, we have a lot of different opinions on masks and some of the the current stuff with what's going on with with COVID, so I would say that's the number one thing that I see. I think the challenge you guys have is you just having what appears to be an endless parade of people that are pretty loud and vocal about their opinions, and for you guys, that's that's hard to wade through the the noise and and look to see what, you know, is best for the student safety and it's better for, you know, the health of all students, so. I'd say that's it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we're gonna take turns answer, ask a question, sort of go around. So at times, you may be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or law that you're required to uphold as a trustee. How will you handle this?
Yeah, at the end of the day, you've got to go by what the rules are. You've got to put your personal opinion or or thoughts aside, for the greater good. I'm I'm sure there's plenty of that that goes on that that you all deal with at many of your meetings, but at the end of the day, if there's a policy in place or a procedure in place, my opinion is you follow that first. You can be heard, obviously, as as a as a member, but the rules are the rules. To me, that's pretty kind of dry.
Thanks.
What do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
That's a loaded question. The most important skills. I wish I was better prepared when I left high school, and I I think my daughter's got a class coming up where in personal finance. I thought that that'd been great if I had that when I was in high school. I remember I had like a home ec class back in middle school, but there's a lot of things that that I think I could have had back in my day, back in the nineties, but just I already see that with what my daughter is, she's in eleventh grade, some of the things they're doing with presentations and, you know, being forced all the online stuff, they had to deal with technology last year. My son, who's in third grade, and he's doing the virtual learning right now, what he's doing today would have boggled me as a tenth grader back then, so I think they have to be, you know, well-versed in whatever the technology is by the time they get to the eleventh and twelfth grade. Hopefully, they're on the cutting edge of whatever that technology is, or whatever the apps are, or whatever the, you know, the hardware is at that point. You know, I I just look at, you know, back when I was in high school, beepers were all the rage, so, you know, now my phone, my my son can navigate my phone or an iPad, and he's, when my wife's not home and he's doing virtual learning, he's navigating what he has to, you know, what his next class is and stuff, and I'm like, good thing, because I would not know how to get you to a team class from where you're at right now. So to me, technology would would be one. Simple things like, you know, personal finance, but I I would say technology is probably number one thing, just that's, everything is going to automation and computers, and I think that's my number one answer, I guess.
How does the role of a board member differ from the role of the superintendent and administration?
Well, the superintendent, if I'm correct, is hired and evaluated by the board. The board is elected by the citizens that vote, and I believe the superintendent is hired and interviewed by the board. It's my understanding, and then you've got a second part about this, you said administration? How how is the board different to the administration? The administration is is paid, correct, and you were all up here doing this for free and on your own, your own free time? So I think that's the biggest difference. You're in an elected position that could be temporary, depending on if you get reelected or fill a vacancy like I'm interviewing for. So the board will set the policy and work on the the budget. Everything revolves around superintendent, but not paid employees of the district, is my understanding.
After review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by a majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage the situation?
Internalize my displeasure, or what what do you mean? I I I might not understand what what you're asking.
So in like going out into the community, if you're, if you were in the minority, how would you handle that situation?
It happens all the time. You know, you you don't always get your way, you know, if if the majority is the majority, and you you lose the vote, you 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 handle it, you you know, you take it like an adult and you move on, and then you you deal with what the results of that vote were.
Thank you.
That's a great question, and I actually thought about that while I was waiting, and I don't know. I I I would have to wait and see how things played out for the first few months before I could probably make that decision. I want to say yes, and my gut says I would, but until I'm in your shoes, which I honestly can't imagine right now with what you you guys are going through, but I want to say yes, but until I was you know, in a seat next to you, dealing with what you deal with on a, you know, media-to-media basis, I can't honestly tell you yes.
Okay, any follow-up clarification?
Yeah, when was the last Chippewa Valley School Board meeting you personally attended?
In person?
Yeah.
Never. I'll listen to the virtual ones all the time.
Yeah, would you, anything you'd like to say in closing or to conclude here today?
Ask a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I was, for some of you that have been on the board for twenty-some years, if anyone wants to take a stab at this, what is your personal biggest challenge right now as being a board member? Now, there's a couple of you that have been on, or.
Just, you know, unprecedented times we've been through, I think, the whole board, whether they've been here for a year, been here for twenty-five, like some of us, but anyways, just never anticipated policies and things we'd have to address during the last two school years. It's been very challenging trying to keep the community together, trying to, as you mentioned in your thing, sift through the noise to see what really is going on, trying to listen to everybody, trying to appreciate each side's opinions, trying to make decisions what's best for children, so. As all you've said, one of the biggest things facing our district has been COVID. That's undeniable, so trying to navigate through that, keep keep it safe, but still have a a good educational program. And not only make it good, but look to improve it, so. I don't think anybody else wants to throw something.
Can you see your mic on? Can you see your mic on? Is your microphone on?
Yeah. It's not on again? I don't remember turning it off again. No, I just said that it's been a very challenging time. And I said, if, if I had to rewind the clock to a year ago, I might have made a different decision, which maybe may have changed some of the trajectory of how things have gone. However, sorting through and people, it's, it's challenging to have the community right now focus on the negatives in the school district when there are so many positives that have happened and are still permeating throughout our district. So that's kind of a challenge, I think, when there's still a lot of good things that are being done every day. The decisions about COVID, obviously, anybody could second guess those, and I understand that. But I would say that I like to keep focused or hoping the community can eventually understand that no matter what, we have a great school district with a lot of opportunities for students. We believe in inclusion. We believe in preparing them for the next step in their life, whatever that is. And that, to me, has been one of the challenges for me anyway.
Thank you.
Anything to say, George?
I was telling, give you a one minute warning.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah. Also wanted to clarify something you had said to so nobody misunderstands that we do get paid by the Chippewa Valley School District.
Oh, I had a freak, okay.
It's a, it's $20, $2,500 a year, so, before taxes.
Some do.
20, 20, I don't know, it's $180 a month for me after tax.
Okay.
So.
So free. Definitely costs more to be on the board than it does for what you give.
Yep.
I think these elections are running around $30,000 the last couple of times, or depending on who you want to spend. The successful ones, I don't know, Mr. White, totally. Anyways, I forget too, of course. Okay, well, we appreciate your time. We appreciate your frankness and your answers. Spending your time with us this evening, so you're putting in for the board. It's, it's, it's a tough time to be a community leader, but so we appreciate you stepping up, play you and the rest of the candidates.
That's why I'm here, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be nice.
Yeah.
Let's move, move up or are you gonna wait?
Explain if they are, next candidate's here, we, we are ready. They're here. It's a little bit early.
I have a schedule on my hand.
Turn through.
My mic, the light, is my mic on? Well, no, it's, it's lights on. It keeps going.
It's like my first loss.
That's funny.
Yeah.
That's funny.
So your first is time for your first, first question.
My first.
You're a lot of firsts. Hello, Mrs. Byrne, welcome. Thank you for coming. Please have a seat yourself comfortably. The board will be asking six questions this evening. We have a 20 minute timeline and answering, but we're running well ahead of schedule. We appreciate your promptness, so we actually have a schedule now, so. Appreciate that for sure. So 20 minutes to answer. If we happen to be running late, I might interrupt, just speed things up a little bit so we can accomplish that. We'll each take turns asking a question.
Awesome, thank you.
I'll follow up after that and give you a chance to close at the end, so.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Sobal.
I get the pleasure of being first, so good evening and thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me this evening.
Our first question is, what are the challenges that you see facing our school district?
Well, right now, I think the obvious question to that would be COVID. I don't think that we would be in the situations that we are in right now unless it was for that. Up until then, I believe that the district was running amazing programs. And I'm sure that from the community comments that you have been receiving, that up until July of 2020, there's very rarely any sort of community comment, because all of us were extremely happy with what, how things were going. And I think right now that with the current state that we are in, we need more parent voices within this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'm up. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
At times, you may be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or law that you're required to uphold as a trustee. How would you handle this?
I believe, and I hope, that when we are confronted with such issues on the board, that we are provided with facts and that from those facts, that we can be impartial and that we can put aside our strong beliefs and do what is best for our children. They are the most important things within this district. And to, for example, for, as far as keeping them in school, I do strongly believe that children learn best inside of the classroom. That is where they should be. However, if facts come up and they must be facts, then I will have to change my position to do what is best, not for my child, for all of the children within this district. And that is basically how I have been as PTO president in my school, handling situations, even if it is something that is against my personal belief. Is this going to benefit all? If it does not benefit all, then we're not going to do that.
What do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
When they graduate from our schools, I hope that they have found their passion. What is, what is going to drive them in the workforce? That is what I love so much about this district is that we offer so many different programs, so many different things. And that when they leave here, that they were not forced to take classes and to do things that they were not interested in. Or they have that opportunity to test out those things and say, that is what I want to do with my life. This is my love. This is my passion. And I think that is the most important thing that we can give our students.
Thank you. How does the role of a board member differ from the role of the superintendent and administration?
The role of the superintendent is more so seeing the day to day operations, being in constant communication with our building principals, our staff, just overseeing how all those day to day functions are being run, hiring our staff, things like that. As far as on the board, what we're looking for is those policies that we have approved. How those are, how those are measuring? Are we meeting those goals of what that policy was supposed to accomplish? And at that time, either we request a new policy or we make the necessary, request those necessary changes so that we're seeing those results that we originally wanted to see in the first place.
Thank you. After review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by a major vote, majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage that situation?
I would be asking questions. That is kind of how I operate. I like to know other people's point of view. If your point of view is so different than mine, I'd really love to have a discussion amongst the board and find out if I am missing something, or if there is an aspect of that that I have not thought about. And perhaps in that discussion, you might also realize there is something that I left out of that, you know, of that, of that problem. And I think that is the most effective way for us to move forward as a board is to have those sorts of tough conver, they may be tough conversations, but they're conversations that need to be had so that we all understand each other. And through those discussions, also clear up for the community if they have, if they agree with, say, yourself or, or me, that they can understand why we came to the conclusion that we did.
Do you mind if I do a follow up on this question?
Sure.
Okay, so I, I guess the discussions and the materials that were given when we're, we have board packets where we get our, you know, the information. And then as a board member, you would follow up on things you don't think you have to make the decision. I think this question is geared more toward, once you've had that discussion in public, so the public sees your point of view and sees if that, if it gets to a point where you have that kind of an issue, then once the board voted on it, even though at the end of the day, you didn't agree with what the board voted, how would you handle it moving forward?
I would have to accept that. That is something that, this is a board. I am not an individual to make decisions for the school district. We are a board of seven. That is why there are seven or less, to make sure that majority rules.
Thank you.
I have a last question. If appointed to the board, would you seek reelection when the appointment expires?
I would, as long as I was seeing the results of what I hope to bring to the board. I have very much in my community tried to repair and rebuild the parent and staff relationship. And that would be my personal number one goal for this, if I were to serve on this board, to make sure that the parents' voices are heard. And when I say heard, that's basically what that means. Not that we are able at this time to give them everything that they have asked for. But at the, in the, at the end of the day, if we're able to at least allow them to know our thought process and to know why we have come up with the conclusions that we have, there is a lot of, I, I guess, I don't want to say fear, because that's not the word that I'm looking for, but confusion sometimes. And if we can, if, if they have a clear understanding of why the decision was made the way it needed to be made, there will be less confusion. There will be less anger. There will be a community that knows that this district is transparent. And that is extremely important, especially in times like these. And in my community, I entered into a time where there was some parents who were not happy with how things were run. And it's all about baby steps. I want to hear you. I want to ask the questions that you want to know. And through that rebuilding, sending out surveys, what do you, what do you want to see here? And the things that I was able to, to implement, we went from having no parent involvement whatsoever to I'm now receiving 40 to 50 families at my PTO meetings. So how, you know, it'll take me a lot longer than these 20 minutes that I have for, for you this evening to kind of explain that process. But this is what I have been able to do within my building.
Okay, um, any follow up or clarification needed by the board?
Yeah. When was the last Chippewa Valley School Board meeting you attended?
I was, besides yesterday, you mean in person?
Yes, in person.
I have honestly never attended a meeting in person as of yet. I do have a special needs five year old at home, so I do prefer to be home with him in the evenings when I am able. However, I will say I have yet to miss a PTO president's meeting or a citizens advisory committee meeting. I am always in attendance at those. So when the time is absolutely needed for, to step up to the plate and be present, I am there.
Thank you.
Anything, Ms. Byrne, you want to say in closing, inclusion?
You know, I, it would just be a great honor to be with all of you on this board. I do believe that I do bring a unique perspective of being a parent of a very young child in the school district. My son is in kindergarten. And when I say that, people often wonder, then how do you have three years already of experience within the school? I was, my son was in the ECSE program. I have seen the programs, the supports, the resources that this district gives to our students. And I, I will say this, I want better. Not because anyone here has done an extremely poor job, but we are a school district. We have to continue to grow. We need to continue to be better for our students so that they are leaving here with those advantages that other school districts do not have. I will be fiscally responsible, because this is where my family is going to call home for the next 12 years. I have a lot invested in the school district. I have a lot of passion and heart. And I want to be a part of that decision making process because I want better.
That was excellent. Okay, well, we want to thank you so much for your time this evening, sharing your answers with us. We thank you for your service. I'm Clinton Belli's PTO as president there. Wish a lot. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's see if he's here. We'll keep going if not.
Start to have discussions.
I can get all the way through. I just figured if he's not here, it might be a good time.
Slow, he's here.
Good God. Yeah, he's called. And then sometimes they have to squat to see fences.
Yeah, you got the first question.
Okay.
Hello, Mr. Gray. Thank you for coming this evening. Have a seat and make yourself comfortable. Informal process here. We're gonna be asking six questions tonight. Each board member will take a turn at, asking a question. So twenty-minute limit we put on it, we've been, the longest ones we've had so far, fifteen, so we have plenty of time. So you take your time and answer the questions as you feel. If we are running late, I will interrupt and give a mention towards the time left and probably close it up.
That one-minute warning.
No, I'll just, I'll look at it. I don't think we're gonna be. So, okay, um, that's it. So we will start with the questions. The first question will be asked by Mr. Waitovich.
Thank you for coming. First question is, what do you feel are the challenges facing our school district?
Challenges facing the school district? I think, I mean, the low-hanging fruit on this one is the challenges that have been presented with COVID. And there's, you know, several fold as to that goes. I think that there's major funding issues that are gonna end up coming down the pipeline because of it. I think House Bill forty-four eleven is gonna help with that, but that's gonna take some time. I think just dealing with logistics of keeping the students safe and dealing with the, you know, the, the orders that have been, you know, I think we're getting on the other side of the, that, but the orders from the health department and the governor have always been an issue. And I think that's gonna be an issue that's gonna be challenging the district for some time. And then thirdly, with COVID, I think another issue is the polarization politically of the community with the mask mandates being in school face-to-face. We've all gone through that and had to, you know, look at every side of the issue. And I think that that's something that I know that the board has had, has had to deal with. And, you know, it's something that's necessary, but it's a, you know, it's a consequence. Aside from COVID, I think that, you know, budgeting is always an issue. That's something that I think every school board has to face, and it's always a challenge. There's always gonna be decisions that have to be made as far as expenditures versus the revenues that come in. And then, you know, there's always deficits that we have to deal with. So that's always, that's always a challenge. And, you know, other than that, I think those are the, the main ones. I don't, I, I view Chippewa Valley as a fantastic district. It is the district that gave my wife and I our education. And I think it gave us a very solid foundation. And all three of my kids have gone through the, the Chippewa Valley schools. And I think that, I like to say that there's not many challenges, but there, we all know that that's not the case. We always have challenges. Thank you.
At times, you may be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or law that you're required to uphold as a trustee. How will you handle this?
As a trustee, I mean, we have the bottom line to do what's best for the district and for our students. I know a lot of, a lot of the chatter out there now is about whether or not school board members have to have skin in the game by having kids in the district. I, I have, my youngest just graduated last year, so I am just on the other side of having kids in the district. But I think that that puts me in a unique situation where I've, I'm just over that hurdle. But at the same time, I'm very in tune with the things that have to be, that we have to think about as parents in the district. But the good thing about that situation is that I'm not, I don't have a child in the district, so I have a little bit more of a clear view from what needs to be done. And I can separate my personal, I don't have a personal situation where I want this to happen because of my personal situation and my child going to the school. And I think I can, I can separate that. But as an attorney, I'm an attorney and I'm a litigator. I go through this every day with every case that I handle. We always do things that I might not agree with, with my client, but my client is the client and they're the ones that make the final decision. I have to do what the client does, even though it might not be what I would recommend or the way I would do it. So you have to separate your personal opinions from what is the best thing for the district. And at the bottom, at the end of the day, bottom line is, you have to do what's in the best interest of the students in the district.
What do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
I think the most important skills are, obviously, they need to have the skills to carry on beyond high school. They need to have life skills, whether going on beyond high school means going to college. They need to be able to, be able to understand and function as a college student. Obviously, that's not for everybody. We want them to have the same life skills to go into whatever area that they, they choose to go into, whether it's the trades, whether it's another vocation, whether it's college. It's important for our students to be able to have the fundamentals to be successful in life, whatever they choose. And it's easy to say that their high school education is geared towards college. But I think that in today's cultural climate, that's now, we're seeing a divergence of that. We want to make sure that our students not only have the skills to take the college course, but they also have enough skills to go in another direction.
Thank you. How does the role of a board member differ from the role of the superintendent in administration?
Obviously, the board, a board member is a one voice on this board, on this public body. This public body obviously oversees and governs. From, I think that the, the relationship between the board and the superintendent should be a symbiotic relationship, and they should be working towards the, the common goal. But the superintendent's role is obviously to administer and run the district. And this board is, has a more of a governing standpoint where there's more of a community aspect to the board, where all, the board is, at least, most cases are elected by the community and are accountable to the community. But I think that it's a more of a governing versus an administering role. The superintendent is the minister of the district and the board oversees that administration.
Thank you.
After review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by a majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage the situation?
Going back to Mr. Migzak's question, I think you have to separate your personal belief from what is best for the district. Now, that could still mean that you have a differing opinion from your other board members. And I think that the best thing to do there is, and this, I'm a collaborator. I like to, I like to talk and I like to collaborate with my colleagues to see their viewpoints and hopefully see my viewpoint and hopefully come to a common ground. But we all know that there's always differing opinions. And I think as a board member, you have to look at all sides of an issue. And you have to look at it from a high-level view where you can see the consequence for all the stakeholders that are subject to the consequences of that issue. And if you truly believe that the, that the best course of action is different than your board, your colleagues on the board, you have to stand up for what you believe is right. So, I mean, I would hope that everybody could collaborate and we could all be unanimous in every, every decision. But we all know that that's, that's, it's, you're here to not just go with the flow and go with the status quo if you truly believe in something that is different than your, your colleagues and you have to stand up and do what you believe in. That's what we're on this board for.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up, similar follow-up to what I had before? So yes, I, I agree with you, Chris. Collaboration and sharing information with each other is key. But sometimes, even though you have discussions, you're not gonna always come up with a majority agreeing. So if you're in the minority on the vote and the board is now voted as one voice, how would you handle and manage that situation, once you may have been listened to, but you still don't agree with what the decision is?
And so, just for clarification, so are you saying in a situation where there is a majority, but my voice would, there's a majority vote?
But your, your voice was not the majority.
Was not the majority.
Okay.
Then I would have to respect the majority vote.
Okay.
And we're understanding that this is a public body that acts as one. Not one member can act for the board. It has to, everything has to be by a majority vote, and that is the process. If I was in the minority and I did not think it was the right vote, that's the democratic process and you have to accept it.
Right.
And so you respect the, the ultimate decision of this board. And as, at the end of the day, that would have been my ultimate decision because I'm on that board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I get the last and easiest question.
Awesome.
Really not the easiest, but.
It'd be something about budgeting, I'm sure. What is the heavy?
This, this one may bring up some nightmares for you, but if appointed to the board, would you seek reelection when the appointment expires?
That would be my plan. That would be my plan. Sure, everybody knows on the board that I, I ran in the last election with Mr. Waitovich. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Again. And although I didn't make it, I, my announcement to the people that supported me was that, you know, although this was not the right time, I will continue to fight for the, for the district. And I will always do what I need to do for the district. I mean, I didn't run to not run again. And I, if I get appointed, my plan would be to run again.
Okay, is there any follow-up questions, clarification needed?
When was the last Chippewa Valley School Board meeting that you personally attended?
In person or on?
Virtual.
In person. In person. It's been quite a while. I watched, I watched all of the meetings virtually. So the last one I watched was Tuesday night's meeting, obviously. The one before was on the, on the fourth, I believe. So it's just, I, I mean, I'm an attorney and, and I, if I left the office, I'd have to leave the office. And if I'm on the board, it's obviously a different story. I would make my, my plan to do that. But it's been quite a while since I actually attended in person, but being truthful, that's it.
Okay. Okay, is there anything you'd like to say in closing or to conclude with?
Other than that, I just, I want to say thank you for the opportunity. It was, it was nice to be able to sit down with you guys. I gotta be honest, I was, as much as I am up in court talking and talking in front of people, this is, I was a little nervous. And, you know, this is, it's a, it's, it's a good opportunity to be able to express at least my answers to these questions. I appreciate all the questions and I look forward to hearing and respecting whatever decision you guys make.
Oh yeah, we appreciate you taking the time to step up in this day and age to, to be a community leader, of you and all the rest of the candidates. Appreciate your answers tonight. We appreciate your work on our foundation board too, worth mentioning.
Thank you.
So with that, we wish you the best and.
Well, I have one question. Are we going to have an in-person Taste Fest next year?
And so we, every time we talk about fundraising, it's always on the table. It's always like, hey, we have to plan that Taste Fest is gonna happen.
Just a great community event. So I, and I, I realize, I was joking.
Two years without it. That's our huge fundraiser. So, yeah, hopefully, fingers crossed.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Mr. Gray.
Thanks.
Okay. Can you guys mic center again? Hi, Mr. Kuzbisk, how you doing this evening? Thanks for coming and, uh, have a seat, relax. Got six questions for you this evening. At twenty minutes, so plenty of time to take your time and answer them. And each board member will, uh, take a turn, uh, asking a question.
Okay.
If we're running late or something, I'll just interrupt. Say, hey, we got to move along. But we haven't had that problem, so. Okay, uh, the first question tonight will be from Mr. Masek.
Evening. Um, what are the challenges facing your school district?
Um, I, you know, one of the biggest challenges facing our district and I, I think that's facing all districts, you know, in the state and the country is funding. I mean, we're, there's not enough funding for public education out there. Um, I don't think that's unique to CHIPS. Um, I think that's going on across the nation and in the state. Um, we see constantly that we don't have enough funding for resources for our students, um, to pay our teachers adequate wages. Um, overworked, underpaid, um, definitely important to focus on funding. Um, I would be remiss to say that honestly, right now with what's going on in the world, the pandemic is obviously an issue. But we're getting through it. Um, and once that's gone, that funding issue is still going to be there. So unfortunately, that's, you know, that's, that's there. Um, I think too, one of, you know, the challenges we're seeing out there right now is the change in education, technology. You know, we're seeing technology come in, playing a bigger part in education, um, and what we do and how we teach our children. And I think it's important that, you know, as a school district, we keep up with those changes and we, we use technology. One of the great things that came out of the pandemic for us is now have one-to-one technology. Um, it's a great thing that we can get that technology in our students' hands, get them used to it. Um, I think it's important that we take that as a positive out of all this craziness over the last eighteen, twenty months now that's been going on. And use that as something we can springboard the future for. So, um, as far as major challenges right now, I, I think those would be it. Um, and I hope one day for all of us that the funding issue goes away, that eventually we all take this seriously. And we're all getting the funding that we need to really support our students that the way we need to help support our teachers, the way we need to. Um, because it's just, it's been going on far too long. And again, that's for everybody, so.
Thank you. At times you may be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or law that you're required to uphold as a trustee. How will you handle this?
So it's important to understand that we'll be a team. Um, and your personal point of view sometimes isn't going to agree with everybody's and that's okay. Um, and if it is against a law or a policy, the way you, the, the way you worded it, you know, at the end of the day, what's best for the students? What's best for the teachers? How does that really work into what's going on? Um, and if we're in agreement as a team that we need to do something, then we need to make that, make that agreement and do it. Um, you know, if, if one individual disagrees with that, that's fine. But as long as, as a team, we come to consensus and we support each other, that's, that's the purpose, that's the goal. That's why they're set. That's why there's multiple. There's not one person making the decisions. There's multiple of us. So, um, I think it's important to understand that you gotta look past yourself sometimes, what you personally believe. Um, and really think, what, how does this affect the greater, the greater good? And at the end of the day, that's, for, for me, that's the kids. Um, you know, it's, it's really important, how would this affect the kids on a day-to-day basis? At the end of the day, this decision that I have to make, taking myself out of it, doesn't, you know, because it's not going to affect me at the end of the day. What decision I make affects the children, it's going to affect the teachers, how they can teach the kids. So it's important to understand how that decision plays into that and take myself back away from it.
Thank you so much.
So, Quino?
Yes, um, what do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate from high school, obviously?
Okay, um, um. I want to say it varies. Um, I have four daughters. Um, two of them are older, two are not in school yet, they're too young. Um, but I know even from my daughters and, and how they do stuff, it's different what they need, um, and how they learn and what they do. Um, I think an important thing is to be able to provide variety to the kids. Be able to find something that a kid can latch on to that excites them at the end of the day, um, wants them to learn. Um, obviously the basics, you gotta be able to read, you gotta be able to write, you gotta be able to do math. Yeah, you know, I, I think a big one now that, again, I brought it up earlier, but technology, um, is, is key. I see, you know, in my personal life and my professional life, people who tend to have a little bit better grasp of the technologies are doing a little bit better. Um, just because it's one of those things that is becoming more natural to people, they don't have to worry about it. Unfortunately, technology is part of everyday life at this point now. So, um, I think it's important that there's variety out there, that we're able to provide programs for multiple different types of, of students. You know, some students are going to have aspirations to go to college. Some students are going to have aspirations to go into trades. Some students are going to have aspirations to maybe start their own business right out of high school. And it's important that we give them those opportunities to understand, maybe have an opportunity to learn something that they can do that after they're done with their high school education. Um, I think back to, to my high school education and I, I really wish that I was exposed to some other things rather than the, the core math, science, English, um, because I think I would have took a little different path in my career. I'm not saying I still wouldn't be an accountant and do what I do today. But, um, probably would have been opened up to some things that I've seen now as my career has progressed. That I wish I would, had a better understanding of in high school. So I might have focused more on it in my, you know, secondary education when I went to college. So to me, it's, it's making sure that we, we have something to offer for all the kids, get them excited, keep them engaged. Um, make sure that they're, they're wanting to come to school, that this isn't, you know, something that, obviously they have to go to school. I mean, that's, you know, um, you don't want the truancy officer coming knocking on your door, you don't want that. But, um, it, it's our, it would, it's the district's job to make sure that we're, we're giving them a reason that they want to come to school. And finding that, that niche or that program that they can really excel in and get excited about, make them come back day after day after day.
How does the role of a board member differ from the role of the superintendent and administration?
Um, so I'll, I guess I'll lean on my professional background. I'm an accountant. Um, I've worked in public accounting and private accounting. Um, so I'll kind of draw from my experience of how a board of directors works with the CEO of a company. Um, you know, the board, the board is there to hire a superintendent, um, and charge him with running the day-to-day of the school. Um, you're hiring someone with the experience that you trust that they're going to get the job done. Um, at the end of the day, you're there to kind of serve as, obviously there's going to be required things that the board has to approve based off of, you know, the bylaws of the board or in case of a corporation, the bylaws of the corporation. Um, that just has to get board approval. And obviously if there's a good working relationship between the board and the CEO, or in this case a board and superintendent, it's usually a pretty smooth process. Um, and that's, that's what you would want. Um, you, the board's there to serve as advisors. You know, someone to kind of have a second set of eyes on something. You approve the budget. Um, mainly because, you know, usually in corporate world, it's shareholders are electing the board members. And here it's, you know, the community elects the board members. So it's, you know, it's taxpayer money or it's investors' money. You, you have someone overseeing the person in charge, making sure that they're handling the money correctly, they're doing their job. Um, it's not to get involved in the day-to-day, that's not, you know, a board's job. They're not sitting there looking at every single decision that's made, that's not really their role. Um, if something comes up, they're there to be a sounding board, to hear what, you know, if there's questions, if, you know, and sometimes the board asks questions, it's not because they think someone's doing a bad job. It's sometimes just to shed light or to give clarity to why you made a decision that you just, you did. So that everyone understands what's going on. Because, you know, sometimes you, you get in that mindset, you know, me in private accounting, I get in that mindset of, I know what I'm doing, this is why I'm doing it. And it doesn't make sense to somebody else who is not in the day-to-day, but they're affected by my decision. So they just want more clarification, what's going on, how's that happen? It's, you know, and that, that's okay. That's, that's part of the role there. So it's more of a, it's, it's a, it's a teamwork role. Um, there should be a good relationship between the board and superintendent. I mean, that's, that, that's the way it should work. You don't want surprises coming in out of left field and, um, you don't want tension out there because then things don't run smoothly. So it's one of those things where, again, I'm just, I'm going off of my own personal experience in, in the business world. Um, it's really, it's, you're there to be an advisor, to make sure that the eyes are dotted, Ts are crossed, everything makes sense. Stay out of the way, don't get involved in the day-to-day, let them do what you hired them for. They're, they're there for a reason. Um, you trust them, they have the experience, they have the education. You, there's a reason you put them in that spot, let them do it, get out of the way, let them do the job. Um, and at the end of the day, that's, that's the best way that it can run. Get too involved, then it's just not effective. That, that relationship doesn't work in the system.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I get the next one. After review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by a majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage that situation? So basically after all discussions, the majority vote comes up and you're, you don't agree with that vote.
Um, you, you guys support. I mean, that's, that's the beauty of what we do, right? And how we handle stuff in, in most of our day-to-day lives and as, hopefully as a country. Um, the, the majority has a say, you might not agree, but you gotta be supportive. Um, that's where there's discussion that happens. You guys, you know, we, we work as a team, hopefully talk through our issues and you might have differences and that's great. I mean, that's, that's part of getting different backgrounds, different people's opinions, working together, bringing them together. Because you want to get that, um, get that different insight sometimes, just to kind of get out of, out of your head. But at the end of the day, if, if I disagree, I disagree and that's fine. But I'm going to support because that's, that's what needs to be done. Otherwise, nothing will work. If, you know, you sit it up there and you just say, well, I disagree and I'm not going to go along with this, you're just causing chaos. And that's, that's not helpful to anybody, that's not going to do anybody any good. Um, you gotta be supportive, you gotta go along with it. Um, and maybe there's time to discuss it again later at a different point. You know, maybe it comes up again a second time around and it didn't really work. And it didn't really work the way we thought it was going to work, let's talk about it again. Here's why I thought it would work differently if we did it the way I was saying about it. Um, so it's just, it's one of those things where, yeah, I, I would imagine the goal would be for all of us to get on board, right? At the, at the end of the day, we're all on the same page, we're going to do it the same way. We're all, we all want to do, do it right, we all want to be together, but if it happens at one or two different, disagree, then they disagree, but they gotta be supportive, you still gotta be supportive of what the decision was and how we're going to move forward, so that we can all move forward together.
Thank you.
If appointed to the board, would you seek reelection when the appointment expires?
Yes, um, I think I even, I kind of addressed this in the questionnaire that we filled out prior, um. I had planned on running in 2020, um, unfortunately with the pandemic, it kind of threw my professional career in upheaval. Um, with the, my company that I worked for, our industry was affected directly by the pandemic. Um, we actually, companies now out of business, I have a new job, I had to find a new job, but what was happening at the time was I, I didn't know what my future held, I didn't know, even if I was going to be in the state of Michigan, to be honest, like, what did I, was I going to have to go find employment in another state, didn't know what econo, economy around Michigan was going to be like. Didn't know if this was going to be the right place to keep my family, and it's just a lot of unknown, and, um, I didn't want to. I didn't want to run for something that I didn't know I could see through that, you know, I didn't want, unfortunately, be in the position we're in today, where I get a, a new board member that resigned early on. And I didn't want that to happen if I got elected and had to move, you know, but now luckily I found employment, great company, we're growing. Um, you know, I know some people that had already worked there, so it's, it's been comfortable for me, they're supportive of their employees doing stuff. Um, so I feel like, you know, I was planning on starting to get everything in my ducks in a row to run next year. Um, but this opportunity obviously came up and I was like, oh, this is a great chance to maybe get my feet wet and, and learn a little bit more about how this process works, and, you know, even if I don't get the appointment, still be able to garner some knowledge to help me next year during the election process, so most definitely, yes. Either way, if I get the position or not, I, I plan on running in 2022.
Okay, is there, uh, any clarification or follow-up questions?
Yes. When was the last Chippewa Valley School Board meeting that you personally attended?
The last one was actually last, oh, was it Monday, the, the, the day that you guys announced that the board seat was open? Um, so was it the fourth, October fourth, first Monday of the month? Um, that would have been the last one I attended in person, um, I watched Tuesdays, obviously, because I wanted to see what was going to happen. Um, you know, I've been to a handful in person, um, throughout the, I mean, the last two and a half years, even before the pandemic. I, I came to a couple of school boards, I think I, you know, I addressed you guys about an issue, so. Um, and it was really that first school board meeting that I was at, it just, so what happened, it was the, uh, um. Plant Moran was presenting the financial, financials for the district, and I was like, wow, you know, it's something I know about, and I got interested, and I was like, wow, I didn't realize, you know, you guys were that in-depth in knowing what was going on with the, you know, finances. I, I didn't realize how much it really did work like a board of a, a company, CEO, you know, that type of thing. So it kind of got me interested, and I came to a couple more board meetings, and obviously all chaos broke loose, and we were all scattered across computers all over the place, so. Yeah, I've been, you know, I've been to a handful, but the last one in person was last Tuesday, or last Monday, before. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything you'd like to say in closing tonight or to conclude?
No, I think, you know, for me, it's just, I, I'm doing this because I want, you know, not just for my kids, but a- all the kids, this is why I, I'm doing it, like I said, you know, the first board meeting, I wanted to kind of perk my interest. Obviously, a topic that I'm familiar with and got to look at, and kind of got me excited, I remember I, I went home to my wife and I said, wow, you know, I kind of looked at this stuff, I was like, I, I was intrigued, I'm like, maybe I should run for school board, she's like, no, that's, she's like, you're not going to do that, I'm like, no, I'm serious, I think I'm going to do it. And I went to a couple more meetings, I was like, yeah, I'm, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. And then obviously, you know, March 2020 hit and everything went out the window, um. And, and it's, it's been in the back of my mind, um, you know, because I, I want to make sure that my kids have a good education. I mean, and I want to make sure all kids have a good education, it's important, it's what's going to, you know, drive their future, it's going to give them their opportunities that they, they need to succeed. I know it was my education that did that, you know, so I want to make sure that all kids have that ability to get that education and find that thing that really kind of drives them and makes them want to do something with their lives, whatever that is, you know, it. Every kid has a different path, every kid has a different dream, a different goal, and I just want to be able to hopefully help those kids reach their dream and their goal. At the same time, I know a lot of teachers, um, I have teachers, you know, in my family. I know how overworked they are, I know how, you know, underpaid they are. It, it's important, you know, we, we strive at work, you know, happy, happy customer, happy employee, kind of go hand in hand, and it's the same thing, you know, if, if you think about it. The, the kids are the customer, the teachers are the employee, both need to be happy, you know, and if, if think that's not happening, then are we going to truly be, you know, truly effective in their education? So, you know, as much as it is for the kids, for me too, there, there is also the, the teacher side of it, you gotta make sure that we're doing what we can to support those people who, you know, have, they have my trust, they have my kids, you know, six hours a day. You know, they're, they're teaching them, and I hope to supplement their education when they come home, helping them with homework and whatnot, but at the end of the day, they're the important people, they're, they're the ones teaching them the ins and outs of, of math and writing and science and. You know, and my daughter brought geometry homework back home to me the other day, and she's like, well, you took this, I'm like, yeah, it was 25 years ago, I don't. I don't remember the details of this, I'm like, I'll help you as much as I can, you know, I'm like, but yeah, you gotta lean on that teacher a little bit more if you're, you know, I don't understand, but I'm here to support you, but. Um, but yeah, it's, it's important that, you know, b- both are being the support they need, um, because at the end of the day, they both need the support. That's the only way that the relationship works, that's the only way we're going to be successful in the ultimate goal of providing the best education in Ken Pearl's. That's all I have, so, nothing else? I'm the last guy, you got, like.
Yeah, no, hey, well, we want to thank you for taking the time to come answer our questions this evening and, and for your, uh, wanting to be a community leader and join in with your hat in the ring, so to speak, uh, hard times to do that, we really appreciate that. So many community members are willing to step up at such a hard time to be on a school board, um, include yourself, so we want to thank you for that. And, uh, thank you for coming this evening, so.
Thank you guys, I appreciate the time.
Okay, um, at this point, we'll move on to, uh, item E, Board of Education vacancy or discussion. Is there anything any board member would like to discuss regarding the candidates or where we take a vote?
So, so, so in other words, we're, oh, I didn't turn it off, you told me it was on. It's on, yeah, I, I don't know why it's, I can't even promise, ah, do you hear me now? Maybe it's I met close enough.
Yeah, there you go.
Maybe that's better, right?
Um, what was I going to say? What'd you say? Um, I was going to say, it really was more of a statement from me that, um, I really appreciate the community and the, and all of the, the, the interests that we got, it, it really, um, was eye-opening in terms of great people we have in the district that are interested in participating, and that for me is especially as a, you know, a person here with more experience, and, and as I leave, some, in maybe a few years when I don't run again, um. You're, the school district becomes your baby, and you want to leave it in good hands when you leave, and so that was encouraging to me to see that there are people out there that I think would be, um, good candidates for the future, so I just want to thank the community members that stepped up, that was important to me. Um, exciting, I should say, not important. Um, I just wanted to say that because of the situations that are going on in our country, in our state, in our district, the polarizing and emotional time we're, that we're living in, I looked at board replacement at this time a little differently than I have in the past. Um, I really focused a lot on, on ability to come in, understand it well, and understand the role, and so I had a, I had a strong focus on that. Um, I do appreciate people attending meetings, I do appreciate more than people would ever know, um, involvement in our schools. I was a PTO president and, and the PTO for many, many years before I ran for school board. And so, of course, being in the, a, a senior level of board member, I really appreciate that, I appreciate people that are great grassroots and want to be involved in their kids' education, but I want people that also want what's best for all students. So that's how I approached it, I just wanted to let people know this before we vote, how I thought about it, I even created my own little a personal score sheet for everybody based on what I thought was important, um, and it was based on the M A S B qualities that we were looking for. Um, I know that people would may potentially scrutinize our decision and not agree with it. But I wanted to be transparent in what I was looking for because of the times that we're in. And even though someone might not get chosen tonight, that I think would be a great candidate for the future. It doesn't mean that I think for this current year, maybe they're ready for that, but I just want to say thank you, everyone that came out and all the people that we interviewed tonight. Um, some great people that I look forward to, hoping, you know, to working with in the future, hopefully, so. Thank you, everyone, I just wanted to make sure that people understood where I was coming from.
For the discussion by the board, we vote?
Can I, uh, I guess I'll.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not sure what criteria everybody else is going to be looking at, but I guess for me, um, one of the things is to be involved with the school district, the kids also have skin in the game here, as they call it. Um, I'm looking for somebody that does have the best interest to the students. One of the things that was mentioned to me a couple of times by a couple of board members is it doesn't seem right to try and get into a position just for a political gain. So we're trying to, I, I mean, one of, that's one of the concerns I would have, um, to have children in the district, to be involved with the district, and then on top of it, to be able to work with everybody, to be able to understand what's best for the students, make decisions professional, things like that. I guess that's where I'm coming from, I'm hoping that, uh, everybody else kind of came from the same area. So. I guess that's probably about it.
Okay, um, just my comments, uh, yeah, I, I consider all six of these candidates we spoke to this evening, all great candidates, we're very, very fortunate in our district to have people like this speak, step forward to want to help out our, our community, so. As Ms. Quino said, it makes us feel good, because many of us are not going to be on this board for very long, I've been here for a long time already. Kid was in the second grade when, uh, he came on the board, he's now 28 years old, so, uh, 21 years on this board. But it's great, it gives me reassurance, knowing we have such quality candidates that are willing to step up, uh, when we're done, our days finish. Okay, so, um, with that, is there any other further comment before we take the vote? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Pyden, can we have a roll call vote, I'm asking for your top candidate, one pick.
Ms. Aquino.
Okay, so based on my scoring sheet that I used and looking for what I, what I stated I was looking for, that, um, Mr. Ken Pearl fits what I think is the most important thing for our district at this time, or the best candidate to fulfill the role at this time.
Mr. Bednard.
Okay, I choose Ken Pearl. Um, again, as Ms. Quino said, I think if times were different, I would have maybe went with somebody that had children in the school, but, uh, very different times we're getting through here. Mr. Pearl brings that stability that we need out of a, a board member to, uh, complete this term out going forward. He has the background, he's credentialed, he worked in the past, it's, it's a very, uh, a good fit at this time. Um, as I said, there will be other openings in the future, and those other gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, uh, will have the opportunity to, to serve on this board also at that point. So, I'll leave my vote with Mr. Ken Pearl.
Mr. D'Amico.
Kizmirzak. One thing that impressed me by all of our candidates was it was clear that everyone was here for the kids, and that was really important to me. But, um, and I, you know, I agree with Frank and Denise that there is definitely, um, you know, hope for our future with all of these good candidates. Um, but considering that the times that we're in, um, my vote this evening is going to go to Mr. Pearl, because I think that he has withstood public scrutiny for many years as a public official, and I think that's what we need right now. Mr. Sobah.
Um, since, since I didn't speak earlier, I, I do want to agree that we had some excellent candidates up here tonight, and I'm sure there's, um, more out there that we didn't get to talk to. And that is very encouraging, I, I agree that, um, to me, it's important to get somebody that has knowledge, has background. Can hit the ground running, um, although not all of us have kids in the school. I, I personally have had four kids that have gone through the school system. I don't think that puts me out of touch, I have neighbors that are in the district that I, I speak to, they have kids in. Um, there's other family members for everybody up here, um, that are in the district, so. To me, having your own personal kid in the district isn't a, isn't a huge, um, um, point. And I, I would agree that, um, I would go with Mr. Pearl tonight, too.
Mr. Foytovich.
I guess I'll start by, um. I understand what you're saying about Mr. Pearl, but the, the problem I have is he has no kids, children in the district. Um, he hasn't even really been involved with the board in many years. Which there are questions about why he might want to be on the board. Um, these are also same concerns, like I had said, that other board members had mentioned to me in the past, so it's not just me that's thinking this. My vote's going to have to go for, uh, Gene Kazmirzak.
Okay, thank you, um, so, Ms. Pyden, would you give us the official count, please, for both candidates that received?
We have four total votes for Mr. Ken Pearl, and we have two total votes for Mr. Eugene Kazmirzak.
Okay, so by majority of the board, Mr. Ken Pearl has been named and appointed to this Board of Education, uh, we have to make a motion yet and vote.
Procedurally, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay, right.
Have support?
I'll support.
Okay, moved by Ms. Pyden to amend the agenda, supported by Mr. Sobah. Okay, um. All those, well, just go ahead, we'll call a vote.
Okay, myself, yes, Mr. Sobah.
Yes.
Ms. Aquino.
Yes.
Mr. Bednard.
Yes.
Ms. D'Amico.
Yes.
Mr. Foytovich.
Are we voting to amend or?
Just to amend the agenda.
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, we have eyes all to amend the agenda, I'd like to make a second motion to amend the agenda to. to, um, appoint Mr. Ken Pearl to fill the Board of Education vacancy.
So this would be item E at this point and then, uh,
Yeah, let me, uh, just clarify a little bit. Uh, we're going to amend the agenda. We're going to change item F to new business. Appointment to fill Board of Education vacancy. We're going to move from the community to item G. We're going to move up and by the board to item H and make adjournment item I. So, um, is it F one, the motion you wanted to make?
Yes, yes, it would be F one.
As written on the,
Yes, as written on our form.
So the motion would be appointment to fill Board of Education vacancy. So we have a motion by Ms. Pyden and supported by.
Ms. Aquino.
Ms. Aquino, thank you. Okay, so, uh, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Myself, yes, Ms. Aquino.
Yes.
Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
Ms. Demink Zach.
Yes.
Mr. Sobah.
Yes.
Mr. Vojtovich.
Yes.
Thank you. Eyes all. Congratulations, Mr. Pearl, if you're still here.
That was just to add, uh, add the motion. We still have to read the motion and then vote on the motion.
Oh, I thought that was, because I've made it F one. That was the F one motion.
Yeah, whenever you're right now.
I know, but I,
Okay.
Say first we had to amend the agenda and then we had to add the motion. Now we gotta read the motion and vote on the motion.
Thank you. Okay, that's correct. All right, so item F one, appointment to fill Board of Education vacancy. Um, recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the appointment of Mr. Ken Pearl to fill a Board of Education vacancy from October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Sobah.
Support.
Support by Ms. Aquino.
Um, can we have discussion on this? Because I think the date may be wrong as to the term, because I believe that since this is to fill a term, it does not go through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. It only goes until the election is certified. So that would be prior to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so we have a support by Mr. Sobah, uh, I mean, support by Ms. Quino, made motion by Mr. Sobah. But we're saying there's an incorrect term in the, uh, in the, uh, motion itself, so let's, uh, let's go ahead and vote on this one. Um, and then we'll have to get that straight.
Can I make a friendly amendment to the motion?
We can do an amendment and we can accept it and then vote on that till the, you know, make the term through till the
The certification of the November twenty twenty-two election.
Okay, can I have a motion to amend F one?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Demink Zach.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Pyden. Okay, Ms. Pyden, could you, uh, could you read the motion as, uh, like to have it?
Sure. We have to vote.
Okay.
So Ms. Demink Zach?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Mr. Sobah?
Yes.
Mr. Vojtovich?
Yes.
Now I'll move that the recommended motion is that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the appointment of Mr. Ken Pearl to fill a Board of Education vacancy from October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one through the certification of the November twenty twenty-two election.
And we just have to accept that change. Right, we should. So I just have to accept and continue my support of the original motion, which I do. And Ms. Aquino, you too, for your support.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the rationale is board policy, uh, zero, one, four, two point five and M C L sixteen point three, one, one. require that a Board of Education vacancy be filled within thirty days. This will accomplish that, so. Okay, uh, roll call vote, Ms. Pyden, please.
Mr. Sobah.
Yes.
Ms. Aquino.
Yes.
Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Demink Zach.
Yes.
Mr. Vojtovich.
Yes.
Eyes all. Now, congratulations, Mr. Pearl, if you're still here.
Congratulations, Mr. Pearl. Okay, so we will move on. Move on to D from the community. Is there any slips this morning for any community members that like to speak this evening? Item G, up and by the board.
I, I would, oh, I'm sorry. I would just like to reiterate, I was really impressed by all our candidates. I was impressed by the volume of people who stepped forward and in all honesty, I would be truly honored to have any of them represent our school district and I would be even more honored to serve with any of them.
I see some, I, I, I agree with, with you. I think they all did a wonderful job. And, uh, I wanted to thank them all for coming in and spending their time here with us to do this tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what I said before and I look forward to next year's election because I think we're going to have a lot of good candidates come forward, so it should be exciting.
I also want to say thank you for everybody that put their letter in and also that came in tonight. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
By the board, any further or final comments? Um, Mr. Roberts, we have our next board meeting back at Chippewa Valley High School Auditorium on, uh, Monday. Okay, so that'll be a regular meeting. It'll be six thirty, um, on Monday at the auditorium at Chippewa Valley High School, so. Mr. Pearl will be sworn in that evening. Is that correct, Mr. Roberts? Okay, so we'll put that in the agenda under new business or do it before the meeting? Maybe prior to, just so you could be seated with us and vote.
Yeah.
Yep, maybe we, we can start the meeting at six fifteen for swearing in. Subcommittee. We can do it. Let's do it right after the pledge. Right after the pledge. Mr. Pearl? Yes.
No.
Yeah, I don't think she's got it on.
Turn the mic on.
Turn the mic, turn the mic on.
I was saying, there's a, I don't know if the three-day requirement includes the weekend or not, but, um, I'd be glad to come in tomorrow to take the oath.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Kava can address that, Board Council.
Yeah, and well, the three-day limit will not include the, the weekend, but it, we can work with Mr. Roberts on what, whatever best is for your time to make sure we get that taken care of.
I think if we, if we have a three-day limit, it doesn't include the weekend, we're good then, right? Because the, today tomorrow, Monday. So we should be, you know, to do a Monday meeting.
I appreciate your confidence in me and, uh, do a great job and, uh, I'll be available tomorrow if they want me to do the oath, so we can, don't hold up your meeting.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, uh, nothing further with that. I'll need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms., moved by Ms. Quino.
I'll support.
Support by Mr. Demink Zach. Uh, roll call vote, Ms. Pyden, please.
Ms. Aquino. Ms. Demink Zach.
Yes.
Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Sobah.
Yes.
Mr. Vojtovich.
Yes.
Eyes all, and we are adjourned at eight twenty-eight P M.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for making the special efforts this week to get this, uh, completed and, uh, we'll reconvene Monday evening.
Yes, thank you, guys.